Tonight's meeting are discussions of code amendments affecting corner lots and short plats and critical area code amendments. We reserve time to discuss Canyon Park subarea development plans, specifically the development regulations, but those discussions are going to be deferred until November 18th, with an additional hearing and a vote on the recommendations for that plan December 2nd. After commission action, that plan will be considered by the council with an additional public hearing at that time. We will also hear a report back from the committee forum to draft a letter to council regarding commission support for addition of a position focused on diversity, equity, inclusion to the city budget in the old business portion of the agenda. So that'll come up in a bit. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Under Governor Inslee's proclamation, excuse me, 20-28 regarding open public meetings, this meeting will be held remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing and orally. The Imagine Bothell notice, city website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. People wishing to comment were instructed to notify staff or provide written comments by 3:00 PM today. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our call-in, phone-in callers, during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provide advance notice are able to make comments under the audience comment portion of the meeting. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. At this point, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the presence of commissioners. Commissioner Olson, Commissioner Curd, Commissioner Vleet, Commissioner Gustafson, and that is all of us. Commissioner P. Strup is absent and excused. An additional senior planner, Dave Boyd, is in attendance and will be leading the meeting from the city's standpoint. Commissioner Alderks, are you just popping in? I see another commissioner.
Name at least.
Yeah. I skipped over her. We'll pause for a minute and see if technology catches up.
I'm not seeing a microphone muted. I'm saying her name. Oh, there we go.
Commissioner Alderks, can you hear us? We cannot. Okay, there you are.
Yep, I hear you now.
Just popped in. Okay, good. All right. So, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines for all meeting attendees. Please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. And if you're streaming the live video, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question, and we've done this enough times, I think we've probably got the system down. So just indicate and I'll try to recognize you as long as I can see you all, and at this point I can, that'll work. If anyone drops off, I'll let you know so we can adjust as needed. And please mute your microphone when not speaking. So moving on, the first item on the agenda is public comment. Keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's emergency proclamation 20-28 regarding public gatherings and open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets. Call in for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. So, Senior Planner Boyd, will you please let us know if there are any comments received?
We did receive an email from Roger Blandich, and he is here with us, and we can let him address the commission now if you would like.
Okay, Roger Blandich here. Thank you for taking into consideration the letter that I sent to you just recently referred to. The teacher's property, originally 22 acres, now 10.9, is an extremely inhibited property. The infrastructure is in place, including stormwater, because teachers originally had a plan for 630,000 square feet. The new regulations would inhibit any development on that property because, first of all, we would have to constrain ourselves to the new regulations, and we are constrained ourselves by the pads that are set up on that property already. There are four pads, and we have to fit within those pads in order to retain the stormwater system that's in place. And that's a very, if not impossible, to fulfill under the new regulations. So, we're asking the same thing Juno Therapeutics is asking, for a little bit more time to submit our site plan and plan for residential, by the way, which would fulfill the comprehensive plan. And it would be a pity, I'm afraid to say, for the comp plan and for the property itself to be subject to the new regulations. And since we anticipate that those will be adopted December 15th, we haven't enough time for the review that I just recently had with Michael Cotterman on the procedure. So, we beg, and the last hurrah, for this property to give us some time to get underway after the new regulations are adopted because we can't make it before. So, I've asked for at least until May 1st, any additional consideration would be very welcome. We have to get a building permit by January 1st, 2022, or the stormwater system that's in place with vaults is, will be abandoned to the new regulations that are starting on that day. So, this is a big part of your comp plan, and the only way we can develop it for apartments, which is fulfilling the plan, is to have more time as and we have had, as I said in my letter, a pre-app meeting. We've been going around and around somewhat inhibited by the new regulations that are coming up. So, anyway, I hope you'll give it consideration for an extension of the regulations that are on the books now until at least May.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blandich. You're at a little over the three minutes.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm through now.
Okay.
One more pitch.
We appreciate your comments. We did receive the letter. And again, we will be discussing Canyon Park Plan at our next two meetings with an additional public hearing at the December 2nd meeting. So, this will be part of the record, correct?
Okay. Good luck to all of you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Vleet?
Yes, Chair. I was hoping that we might be able to, when we do address this letter and Mr. Blandich's letter in the future, if we could have like an address or maybe like included with regards to what property he's talking about there, it'd be nice to get a visual. Thank you.
Yeah, figure out the location of the property on the, within the planning area. Okay.
And yes, we can provide that, and I can also describe it. It's the large parcel on the northwest corner of 220th and 20th. I'm sorry, not, 220th and 20th. So, and if you go out there and look at it, you can see that the pads that Mr. Blandich referred to are in place.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, thank you. Were there any other public comments?
We don't have any other call-in. Call-in people, we did, I did get an email, and I'm failing to recall if I forwarded it to you. It was regarding the critical areas regulations. But I can pull it up to share with you, and I've explained to the the citizen that sent it that we would be, that I would enter it into the public record once we went to public hearing.
Yes, I believe you did share that with us a few days ago.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, moving on, seeing as there are no further public comments, we'll move to the approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of the October 21st meeting. Commissioner Curd?
I move to approve the meeting minutes from October 21st.
Okay. Is there a second? Commissioner Vleet?
Second.
Okay, it has been, there is a motion to move in second, the, a motion to approve in second the minutes. Any discussion needed on these minutes? Okay, and all in favor of approving as submitted, please indicate. Sarah, are you? Yes, okay. So we have unanimous approval of the minutes. We'll move on to our next agenda item, new business. Is there any new business for this meeting? Seeing none. Seeing none, we'll move forward then to our first item for the study session, the corner lot duplexes and nine-lot short plat code amendments.
Okay. Thank you, Chair and planning commissioners. I would like to just give a very brief introduction and then turn it over to our consultants. This is a, these are code amendments that are supported by a grant from the Department of Commerce that is related to House Bill 1923, which included a number of measures to address housing issues. And so both of these are housing-related code amendments. I've been using a rather cumbersome title for this. Corner lot duplexes in single-family zones and expanding short plats from four lots to nine. Our consultants have used a much more concise title of housing code amendments. So, I think we'll go forward with the more concise one. And I'd like to introduce from the firm of OTAC, Christina Hayworth and Sierra Carson. And Christine, if it's okay with you, I can pull up your presentation and you can just walk me, tell me when you want to move to the next slide, unless you'd like to share. Okay. So, let me pull that up. Go ahead and you can go ahead and start your introduction while I pull it up.
Great. Thank you. So, as Dave said, my name is Christina Hayworth. I am a senior planner with OTAC, and I'll be walking through the presentation. Joining me tonight is Sierra Carson, an associate planner also with OTAC, and we'll both be available to answer questions at the end. So, this is an introduction to the housing code amendments that we have been working on. Next slide, please. We'll walk through why we're going through this amendment process, the work that we've done to date reviewing the different codes and plans that the city has adopted, and then our current recommendations, first for the short plat related amendments, then for the corner lot duplex related amendments. And then we'll have Q and A at the end. Okay, so why these housing code amendments? The Washington State Legislature adopted House Bill 1923 for the purpose of increasing residential building capacity and improving housing choice and affordability in accordance with the Growth Management Act. Bothell is part of King County Planning, fully under the Growth Management Act, and is able to participate in the grant funding availability to implement code amendments or other strategies. Bothell selected code amendments related to implementing the purpose of HB 1923. As part of this work, there is a temporary exemption from CIPA and GMA appeal to complete these amendments before April of next year. So, we are working quickly on that specific timeline to get these code amendments written and adopted. Next slide, please. As part of our work, we looked at these documents. So we looked at the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan. We looked at the city's subarea plans. We looked at titles 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 17, and 18 in the Bothell Municipal Code. And then our engineering staff looked at the Bothell Design and Construction Standards and specifications. We are recommending revisions to titles 11, 12, 14, 15, and 17. Title 17 and the Design and Construction Standards will have updates coordinated specifically with Public Works as part of their regular update process. Next slide, please. So, the short plat amendments, the description from HB 1923 is to allow the division or re-division of land into the maximum number of lots through the short plat subdivision process consistent with state law. Right now, Bothell allows up to four lots to be processed through the short subdivision process, and state law authorizes up to nine lots. This amendment, this is a process amendment, so it doesn't change anything related to density or dimensional standards or anything like that. It's just the number of lots that go through the short plat versus the long subdivision process. And we are, we provided a memo with track changes that show all of the amendments that we're recommending. We are recommending amendments to the definitions sections to make that change from four to nine lots. And then we're also suggesting that the thresholds for land unit developments and for the CIPA categorical exemptions be recalibrated to fit with that nine-lot threshold. So, currently they're set up as four lots consistent with your current short subdivision threshold, and we're recommending that that be increased along with the number of lots that can go through the short subdivision process. As part of this work, city staff also asked that we overhaul the application requirements consistent, oops, to be consistent with the long subdivision process. So you'll see that whole section has been replaced with the same application requirements from the long subdivision process. And then Public Works is working on language to eliminate exemptions for installing frontage improvements as part of the short subdivision process, and we'll be coordinating with them to develop some additional amendment recommendations in that section. Next. Thank you. The duplexes on corner lots is described in HB 1923 as authorizing a duplex on each corner lot within all zoning districts that permit single-family residences. We have recommended authorizing this through the residential use table. That requires the addition of some language describing how corner lot duplexes work. Currently, duplexes are allowed only in certain zones to fulfill affordable housing requirements, and that's not, that's not part of the intent of HB 1923. So we are adding another authorization for corner lot duplexes specifically. The existing duplex language would remain for non-corner lot duplexes that are still used to fulfill the affordable housing requirement. To support that, we are also recommending some new access and driveway requirements that show up in the Design and Construction Standards and specifications, and that document is updated administratively by Public Works. So, these amendments would be in effect on every corner lot in any zone that authorizes single-family residences, so all of the residential zones. The single-family, primarily single-family zones are shown on the map that was included in your packet in the yellow to red dark orange color set, and then the multifamily zones are in the purple to blue color set. Corner lot duplexes would be authorized on any of these lots. What this map does not include is the downtown SVV zone. It also does not exclude any of the large parcels that have been developed as schools, churches, or other pretty permanent facilities. So a lot of these very big lots would probably not be developed as a duplex, but they are corner lots technically, so they've showed up in our map analysis. Next slide, please. We, what I'm showing here are a few examples of what a corner lot or any, I guess not all of these are on corner lots, but what a duplex in a single-family neighborhood could look like. So you can see that there are some that look like maybe they have been retrofitted to become a duplex, like the one in the lower left-hand corner, whereas others have been purpose-built to be duplexes. The upper left-hand corner, the lower right-hand corner are great examples. You can also see in some cases there appear to be side-by-side units, and there also appear to be some bottom floor, top floor units instead of side-by-side. Go to the next slide, please. This is an example of what a new construction or two different new construction duplex concepts on about a 6,000-square-foot lot could look like. These come from the City of Tacoma's Residential Infill Pilot Program. So you can see that they are pretty efficient uses of the property to get two units. In some cases, they orient towards one street frontage. In some cases, they orient towards two different street frontages. But they are a way to increase density and housing choice on the corner lots, and they do use existing lots quite effectively. And then the next slide is a rendering of the one on the right in the previous slide. So this, you can see, is oriented one frontage in each direction on the corner lot to fit in with the character of the, of the single-family residential neighborhood. And I think that that concludes it. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. So I see Carson in the ribbon view. I'll have to jump back and forth to get everyone. But I'd like to ask that we first discuss the short plat process. That might be a little quicker, and then discuss the corner lot duplex issue, just so we can move one issue and then on to the other instead of jumping back and forth. So are there any questions or comments on the short plat process? Carson, Commissioner Curd?
Thanks. This is Carson. Thanks for the presentation. It was really great to see everything laid out so well. My question on the short plat process, it might be more of an overview technical question, which is when a developer is pursuing a short subdivision versus a long subdivision, what differences in like fees and city process might arise from that? And does effectively increasing the short plat threshold from four to nine decrease the amount of work that the city has to put in? Or would it be more, more work on the city's side to approve these short plats?
So, I'll let Dave address the fee question. But in terms of the process, so the long subdivision process, both are, both are public processes that have public comment periods, but the long subdivision process has a hearing associated with it. So the short plat process is less work. It's also processed on a faster timeline. State law mandates 30 days, not including any time that the city is waiting on additional information from a project applicant. So, a notice of application goes out, public comment is collected. The public still has an opportunity to review all of the application materials, but there's no hearing. It's a staff-decided process.
So, from a staff standpoint, the short plat would be a streamlined, more straightforward, simpler process. And, and so the staff has actually supported making this change for some time. Most jurisdictions do allow nine-lot short plats. We're one of the few remaining at four. As far as fees, I cannot, I don't have that information since I don't do development review. But we can certainly come back to you with, with information about the difference in fees.
That wasn't my intent, but thanks for answering the questions that you could.
Okay. And I may have missed that part of your question. If there was another question related to fees? I'm quite sure that they, it would be a lower fee since it doesn't have to include the staff time to to hold a hearing.
Commissioner Vleet, I see you're
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I know we discussed this on Planning Commission for a little bit a few years ago, and we decided to stick with the smaller four. I know that a lot of jurisdictions have shifted to, or have something as far as the nine lot versus four. Can you tell us some examples of why cities would maybe want us to keep it at four rather than nine? Are there any benefits to doing that?
Sorry, go ahead, Dave.
No, you go ahead, and then I'll follow.
Okay. So I do work in a number of jurisdictions doing on-call planning review. The only time that I typically see jurisdictions preferring to stick with the lower lot threshold is either there aren't a lot of subdivisions happening, for example, in the City of Medina. They're just, there aren't a lot of subdivisions left. There aren't a lot of lots large enough to divide. And so they just never needed to increase their threshold. In, in other jurisdictions, if the city wants to have the hearing examiner retain review authority over larger projects, then they would be inclined to keep a lower threshold for the short plat process.
Okay, thank you for that. That was, they had the hearing examiner. That was, that was something that was a little bit of a concern to me, losing that part of the process. But Dave, you said you had some other comments on that.
Well, I wanted to give Christina the first shot because she does work in multiple jurisdictions. But, and so I would agree with all that she said. And I cannot, I don't remember that we did consider this, at least that it got to the point of actually being initiated as a code amendment. I think it's something that's been discussed as a potential docket item in the past. So, I think, and what you said is there's a perception and probably a bit of a reality that there's more opportunity for public comment with the long plat through the hearing examiner process. But we do accept comments from the public on all, all permit projects. And, and our, the development review staff does take those comments into consideration, whether they come via an email in response to a project notice, or a notice of application, or, or through the hearing process. So. So we feel that there still is adequate opportunity for public input, but that's probably one reason that some have wanted to keep the threshold lower.
I would also add that in a situation where you have a more complicated project with other kinds of permits involved, like a PUD, like a clustering project, or critical areas alteration, those would be consolidated and would still then go to the hearing examiner. So this would be, the short plat process would still be applicable for more straightforward projects, but if they start to get complicated and trigger other permits with a hearing component, then they'll still go to the hearing examiner for a decision.
Okay, and one additional thing, thank you for those comments. I liked the visuals that you showed us of those six different opportunities for duplexes or possibly even triplexes. What I appreciated most about them was they looked like houses that would fit in, not that architecture doesn't change over time, but what I would not want this to do is set off basically a redevelopment of corner lots where a lot of the structures that have kind of been a fabric of the neighborhood and associated houses be torn down was something that looks very, very different. Not that that's not going to happen over time, I just, I liked those pictures, they felt like they created a lot of housing opportunity, and I can tell you, because I know it, a lot of affordable housing opportunity as opposed to new duplexes and triplexes, which while they'll be more affordable than a single-family residence, are going to be less affordable than a house that's retrofitted for a duplex or a triplex. But thank you very much.
Dave found those.
Mr. Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here, I would like to follow up on Commissioner Vleek's excellent questions. I am curious, is there any provision considered that would be no demolition of existing houses and instead retrofitting houses to meet duplex requirements? I honestly don't know how I feel about this provision, I do know that it is one that has been considered in California as a means of preserving existing affordable rental houses.
I think that's a great question, and I don't believe it's one that we've discussed between the consultants and staff looking at this, it's certainly something that we could look into, and perhaps Christina has looked into that in other contexts.
I have not, but I have adding it to my list right now.
And Commissioner Gustafson, if you know of specific examples of communities in California that have done this and could pass those on, that would be great.
So were there any other questions or comments specifically to the short plat process? Or shall we, being none, ban additional questions or comments on the corner lot duplex amendments?
Right, oh.
Commissioner Vleek.
Oh, Dave, if you have something to chime in with, I can hold.
No, go ahead.
Okay, I will try to bring a picture in one of the following meetings to present. I like this idea and opportunity just to be forthright about duplexes and triplexes on corner lots, potentially, at least, I like the discussion of it. I have one on my street, and it's, my street does not have sidewalks, it's very near downtown. I actually like the fact that it doesn't have sidewalks, but that's another discussion. But they have several cars, and there's one driveway that goes into the, off of 104th, which is a very main road, and when this house was built, the Bothell's a much smaller, slower town. As far as I can tell, hardly anybody ever uses that driveway, because they had to back off on 104th. They now have, usually have three cars parked between the street and the end of the lot, and so when you come in, it's very crowded, and we've almost had several accidents there. So I guess one thing is, that I'm looking at with regards to the materials that are reviewed is, and I guess you tried to address driveways, I just, that was a concern to me, is maybe either signage that cars couldn't park close to the intersection, I don't know how to do that, but I know that it could be an issue going forward.
So yeah, it'd be great to see examples, both good examples and problematic ones like that. I would say, and this is getting back to the previous question about provisions that would not allow demolition of existing structures, and instead, on a corner lot that has an existing structure, require retrofitting. One possible problem with that is a retrofit might kind of force you into some compromises for things like how you organize the parking on a site where a demo and rebuild might get a better solution overall. Granted that there are probably cost implications there, but, so, I guess I would, my first thought is that while we can write code to encourage retrofitting, it might be problematic to require it. And another point I'd make is the examples from the coma that Christina showed appeared to have two parking spaces, or a lot with a duplex, so a lot with two units. In our, and I can't remember if this was actually in the report, the memo that you provided, Christina, but we've been talking about four parking spaces for a parcel with a duplex. It would seem, most single-family, well, our current standard for single-family houses is there needs to be three off-street parking spaces, and they are often provided through a two-car garage with two parking spaces on the driveway apron. And we require, or ADUs require one additional parking space than the requirement. So a house with an ADU would require four spaces. So it seemed appropriate to go with that number for a duplex as well. Anyway, that's our current thinking, we'd certainly welcome your thoughts on that. And anything else that was in the memo that was in the packet?
So Commissioner Olson, then Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Dave and Christina, I really appreciate all the information. I will say I'm a little hesitant to prescribe so much parking, just because if our goal is to create different kinds of stock, and, oh. Okay. I think it's important to remember that these are lots all over the city with different kinds of access to transit, different kinds of access to roads with sidewalks or not to walk around. I think it's going to be a lot of different lifestyles throughout the city that would be interested in these units, and it's important to sort of, I think, give a little bit of leeway to the people who are either converting their homes or building new homes, in saying, okay, I live here, you can walk two seconds to a bus stop, we don't quite need as much parking, because we're going to attract someone who wants to take that bus to work. Versus, you know, if you're way deep in the suburbs, maybe you want the four parking spaces. So I don't know that there's a one-size-fits-all way to prescribe parking for this, that's kind of my concern. Otherwise, I'm very excited about the prospect, I would love to see it wider, but I know we're just focusing on corner lots right now, so thank you very much.
And Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you, Chair, Sarah Gustafson here, I think my question is similar to Commissioner Olson's. I am having some trouble making the connection between why a no demolition provision would be impractical in the connection to parking. I understand a no demolition provision might be impractical, because sometimes you cannot retrofit, you need to rebuild, but what does it have to do with parking? Is it the case that a duplex would require four parking spaces? I know this has already been discussed, but I'm just trying to clarify that. So if you could go a little more into that, that would be helpful.
And, you know, I didn't mean actually to tie the demolition to parking, per se. I use parking as an example that if you had to work with the existing structure and how an existing structure is placed on a lot, it may, that might force you into putting the parking in a place that may not be ideal otherwise. So, and there are probably other factors that could play into that. We haven't spent a lot of time on the parking, we kind of, we rationalize it based on what we do require for single-family homes now, and then for single-family homes with ADUs. But one thing that we haven't done, and that we could certainly do, is look at, well, how, if and how the provisions that we just passed for parking exemptions within a quarter mile of, or within near frequent transit, whether those would apply in this case. And if they don't apply, we could, we could, we could add a provision to these duplex regulations that would allow that.
Commissioner Olson, then Commissioner Gustafson.
I just wanted to say I love that idea, I cannot say I love it enough, so that would be great, I think. Especially just to give people kind of more options, so thank you.
Mr. Gustafson.
Sarah Gustafson here, I think we are all echoing each other. I wanted to say that if we are going to pursue a no demolitions provision, which has its pros and cons, of course, rethinking the parking would be a very good idea, because if we don't need to demolish existing structures in order to put a new parking, we, A, could prevent gentrification, because there would be less rebuilding expenses, the housing, the duplex would be more affordable than a completely rebuilt one. It would also be better for the environment, because there would not have to be so much waste from the rebuilding, and also, if you can preserve the existing structure, I think we could preserve the neighborhood character, and I think, even though a lot of folks really care about the parking, they also care about the look, and if they had to do a trade-off, they would choose houses that look more like what they have, perhaps, than having that extra parking. So things to consider, thank you.
Mr. Alderks.
Jenny here, thank you for this presentation, and my question is about square footage. Is there any minimums or maximums for square footage for buildings that might go on these lots? I recognize that we're going, we're talking about going from four to nine, and so even, I guess that's to the previous point, but also, in terms of duplexes, if we're talking about, you know, essentially smaller units on these corner lots, is there any kind of minimum or maximum when it comes to square footage for them?
I don't believe that we have proposed any such limits. The thinking has been that the setbacks and height requirements would be the same as they are for single-family homes, we wouldn't be changing that. And so the scale of the buildings would be, would be the same as what you could achieve under the current single-family zoning with a single-family home. If that's something that the commission would like us to explore, we can. But I guess we're trying to keep it simple, and the more you add provisions like that, the more opportunities there are for unintended consequences, so. And part of the idea is that if you can build these kinds of structures in the same envelope that you allow single-family homes, that is one step towards maintaining the character of the neighborhood, at least in terms of scale.
Are there Commissioner questions or comments to the corner lot duplexes? Commissioner Currie.
Thanks, this is Carsten. I have the pleasure of living in a corner lot, four-plex in Bothell, and it is historic and is grandfathered in. We have six parking stalls, only four of which are in use here. Two people take transit, I have a car that sits there and I don't use it very often, and then one family who lives here does use two vehicles. And so I really like approaching the discussion from a lens of flexibility. We can't simply cookie-cutter our way through like we have for so long with single-family, and imposing design restrictions and requirements for parking and for square footage on every person who lives or chooses to live in a duplex. My question is, why are we stopping at duplexes? There's such a great opportunity to do duplexes on corner lots in Bothell, because there are lots of corner lots, and it's all across the city, right? And so we're not focusing density, and we're not focusing changes in one neighborhood or another. By spreading the love over the entire city, we're not changing a whole lot, and it's not overly focusing pressures for development and gentrification in one neighborhood or another. It just seems like, oh, these are so limited, and I know that we're restricted by, you know, SEPA and GMA restrictions up until May, but my question is something that Commissioner Vleek led to earlier, which was why specifically just look at duplexes? And are there any easy ways to kind of throw triplexes into the mix or moreplexes? Anyway, thanks.
I would agree that this is a bit of a baby step, and it was somewhat intentional, because in the past, there has been reluctance to, for measures that could change the character of a single-family neighborhoods in Bothell. I think that is changing somewhat. Clearly, the Planning Commission has, or at least, several planning commissioners have a different view than, and I guess what I'd say has been the prevailing view in the recent past. So perhaps we could have been bolder and gone for a grant that would have allowed us to explore other missing middle housing types, but we, and we certainly can go there, that this is something that we could consider in the 2021 docket. I think the thought was, let's give this a try, show that it works, that it isn't going to create huge problems, and then we can look to expand it.
Thank you.
So other questions or comments? So Dave, next steps on these amendments?
So the next step would be, well, that's one thing we wanted to gauge the commission on, and we could, I had told our other consultants, who I haven't seen... the commission on, uh, and we could, uh, I, I had told our other consultants who I haven't seen join us yet, uh, that, uh, they could probably anticipate, um, uh, the critical areas discussion to start around seven. So we do have a little bit of time, 10 minutes. And, uh, we, if, if planning commission was interested, we could go through the, the, uh, the memo that, um, Christina and Sierra have, uh, prepared. Or one other, uh, I guess broader question that I would pose back to, uh, the planning commission is, um, the, the illustrations that Christina shared, uh, show, uh, structures that would be, as I said, within the, the, the building envelope that allowed for single family homes. One question we, we came across was, do we want to explore, um, including, uh, code amendments that, um, would require and or encourage uh, matching, you know, the prevailing architectural style of the neighborhood? Or, um, requiring, uh, certain elements? And, uh, personally, uh, that's, uh, that's one of those areas where, um, we have, that, that oftentimes you, 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 uh, find that you've, by doing so, you've, uh, placed impediments, uh, and, um, and, and kind of reduce the, the ability of people to, 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 uh, create these, um, these new housing types. Uh, so, um, we haven't gone there yet, but I'd certainly, uh, be interested in hearing, uh, the planning commissioner's thoughts about that and, and then whether they would like to take a closer look at the actual, any of the suggested code language in the memo.
So there is no such requirement for single family homes, is there? You see a variety of styles on a new home goes into a neighborhood.
We do. And that's another reason we have been reluctant to. We, we do have such restrictions for accessory buildings on a single family lot. And again, that's maybe part of a, uh, uh, bygone, uh, perspective. But, uh, we, we do require accessory buildings to have a similar character to the primary structure and, and I don't know that it's been a, a, a major impediment or a, a, a serious, um, problem for applicants. But it does make, I guess, the review somewhat more complicated if somebody does kind of want to push that envelope, uh, a bit.
Okay. Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chair. My thought is not to put that in the code and maybe to leave that up to neighborhoods through HOAs. I think one of the biggest complaints that I've heard from neighbors is how cookie cutter new developments seem, how the houses, there's like four different styles and then there's times 30, you know? I think that would sort of perpetuate the sameness. Not that I necessarily want, you know, an ultra modern house in the middle of craftsmen's either, but, um, it, I think it makes more sense to let, um, pockets of neighborhoods sort of tackle that themselves. That's sort of my first take, but I am curious what everyone else thinks.
Commissioner Curd.
Thanks. This is Carsten. Commissioner Olson, my take is that we're in a housing crisis and that this might, this is my personal take. Other people likely don't have this take, but we can't afford to require craftsmen's when there are people that are not able to live in our city and are pushed out to Granite Falls or even further. That's not necessarily the point of the discussion either, but I just thought I'd offer mine.
Mr. Valique.
Um, so Dave, on that, um, one thing I might be interested, like you said, we want to keep it kind of more simple and start it off soft so it's, uh, more accepted. And so we, we have success, uh, and then look into maybe further expanding it in the near future. I don't know if there'd be anything, and maybe the consultants could weigh in here, if there'd be any type of benefit to getting to our trying to, what, uh, Commissioner Gustafson was talking about earlier, retaining more of the actual, and myself, about, uh, the homes that are already there, which are the greenest homes by the one way, the ones that are already there. Uh, you can't create a greener one, this one is already there. Um, but, um, to maybe restrict it, I don't want to, I don't want to, want to put a lot of restrictions in, but maybe make it so you, you don't go higher. So I don't know, it's more accepted amongst the next door neighbors. I don't, I don't even know if that's a good idea, but I, I was just thinking about it and I would be interested to know if any of the commissioners thought that that was a good idea. If you think it's a terrible idea, I'm, I'm fine with that too.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Yes, this is Sarah Gustafson. Thank you, Chair. Um, I think there are a lot of concerns, I think, here. I think preserving the existing structure in effect does fulfill the idea of keeping the same architecture or architectural style. And I think that's important. I think it's even more important for the environmental reasons. But my main concern here is the equity concern because we don't want a perhaps affordable rental property to be converted into a very pricey duplex. And I don't know if that's the case in Bothell. This is why an equity person might be able to help us come to this decision. Do we just say, yeah, rebuild? Whatever, because we can't afford to stick to the old houses or no, we need to stick to the old structures because otherwise we're going to be kicking people out. And that's my number one concern and why I'm bringing it up. So I'm wondering if Christina might be able to weigh in on that. Or maybe the U-Dub folks might be able to weigh in on that if this becomes a real question.
So, sorry, Commissioner Gustafson. Um, my, my thought is that we could look into incentives that would, um, that would help support people keeping and retrofitting their existing structures. So, um, maybe we can, uh, look for some flexibility on certain code requirements, um, or, expedited permitting process. I, I don't know if city staff would be receptive to that totally spitballing, but that is, um, that's one, one tool that other jurisdictions have used to incentivize certain kinds of development. Uh, so we could, we could look for a few different incentives, um, and bring them back next time.
And I, I would agree with that and, and parking may be one of those incentives, especially since we're dealing with corner lots. Corner lots have additional street frontage, so they do have additional street parking, uh, immediately adjacent to them. So that can also, could also be an argument for, um, um, reducing the, the parking requirement, um, or, uh, and perhaps in combination with, uh, proximity to transit and other services.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I would love to see a, keep the old structure. You can forget about building those two extra parking spaces type thing going on. I do know that incentives can get tricky, so I don't want to make it too complicated because sometimes incentives seem like we're balancing too much. So I'm wondering what are the options with incentives and also without incentives?
Okay.
Commissioner Alderks.
Jenny Alderks here. Um, I would echo, I think, what, uh, the other commissioners are saying, um, with the concern that I wouldn't want this to become an opportunity for luxury, uh, style buildings coming in when the intention of having duplexes is for, um, affordable housing. And so I'm, I'm not necessarily proposing anything in particular, but how do, how do we, uh, make sure that the, the purpose of, of this recommendation is to maintain not just, you know, mid-level, uh, housing, but so that it is affordable for the, like, people coming in or people staying in neighborhoods?
I think that's something we, we will need to, um, take a look at and, and get back to you. That brings into mind, um, as Christina mentioned in her present, uh, presentation, we do have in our affordable housing, chapter of, uh, our development regulations. We do have a provision of, that allows, uh, duplexes and single family zones as part of an affordable housing, uh, requirement. So far, we haven't actually, uh, uh, created any single family up zones that, that, uh, have given us a nexus to have an affordable housing. Uh, so we put that provision in, uh, uh, so that it was there, uh, when and if we, uh, we got to that point. I see another call in, or two more call in users, uh, here, um, that I'd like to recognize if I can just take a break. Call in user number three. And call in user number three just disappeared. Call in user number four. And you, oh, I cannot unmute your microphone. I, I muted it. Can you unmute and, uh, uh, give us your name and? Can you hear me? Okay, call in user number four. Uh, if you pull, pull up the participants, um, on, on your screen, uh, on the, the bottom, it'd be on the bottom of your screen. Now, I guess in some cases it's on, uh, the toolbar on the top. Uh, you can see if, if you're identified as call in user number four and, and feel free to go ahead and, uh, uh, unmute and, and introduce yourself. In the meantime, I'll go ahead. We'll, we'll carry on. That, that could be our consultant for the critical areas, uh, regs. Uh, and I'll also check my emails to see if I've got a message to that effect. Can you? Did I, did I answer your question, Commissioner Alderks?
Um, Jenny here. To some extent, I believe so. Um, it sounds like there may be further, uh, discussion and insight into it. I'm, I guess I'm not specifically asking that these, um, units be designated affordable. Knowing that I, maybe, and because of the, like, supposition, like, the, you know, the, the, it logically follows that these would likely be smaller units and they would be, um, because they're shared lots and they're not single family, that they would become lower priced, not necessarily digging into affordable housing. Or, or being designated or, like, sought after for that purpose, um, using the incentives that we've discussed in, in other, in other recommendations. And so I'm just, you know, I'm hoping that these are providing the opportunity to be nice starter homes for people or, um, that they're able to come into and afford at a, at a starter home level. Um, but not necessarily be designed to or intended to be affordable housing labeled. Is that, is that making sense?
Yeah. So an example of that is, um, uh, when we allowed, uh, um, detached accessory dwelling units. Uh, we, and in fact, we already had limitations on the size of an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, but we, we kept that and we, um, expanded on it a bit and we limited them to 800 square feet. Unless there was a situation where you had a daylight basement that was larger than that, you can, you can apply for an exemption, uh, to that limit. And the reason for the size limit was, uh, primarily to, um, encourage, uh, units that would be affordable, um, without actually, uh, going through the process of making them officially affordable with covenants that would, um, uh, as you do with an affordable housing project. So in, you know, following that line of, uh, thinking, uh, limiting the size of the duplex units, you could make the argument that that would, uh, uh, also encourage affordability without actually requiring it. But we, our, our thinking so far has been that, um, maintaining the, the, uh, building envelope of the single family homes is gonna itself, uh, tend to limit the, the size of these units, um, without imposing a, uh, an arbitrary, uh, size limit. And, and there may be good reasons to, uh, allow, um, well, to not limit the size, uh, uh, and so that the, these units could be, um, relatively affordable, uh, family housing, um, as opposed to just apartment housing, which is most of what we're getting in terms of affordable housing, uh, is, is in smaller unit, smaller apartment units. Christina, if you have any thoughts, feel free to chime, chime in on that.
I would, I would just echo what, um, what you've just said, uh, the importance of providing, um, affordable family-sized units. Um, I mean, that's, that's something that's not happening, um, pretty much anywhere. Uh, a lot of, a lot of developers are building, you know, studio one and two bedroom units. Um, and, you know, family-sized units or, or three bedrooms and up. And so this would be one great way of ensuring that families in Bothell have some additional choices.
Okay, well, uh, seems like we're winding down on questions. Any other questions or comments? So some of what I heard was some real interest in parking exceptions, particularly near transit, as we did with the affordable housing. Affordability, clearly a lot of discussion about that, could follow up. And also some way to preserve existing structures. So those are themes that I heard. And maybe when we come back, we can expand a little bit on those items. So Dave, you want to check if you're, so I guess we can wrap up this portion of it. And you want to check if your other consultants are all or four?
Yeah, uh, and I think I'm, um, I'm gonna have to unmute all, uh, perhaps to, to do that. But, um, before I do that, just to, to wrap this one, uh, in terms of next steps, um, we, uh, I, I think that you've given us enough new ideas to explore, uh, that it probably makes sense to come back with one more study session before we, um, come back with the, um, public hearing and, and, uh, recommendation. So, and, and I'll have to, um, get back and coordinate with others, uh, in terms of the timing of that. Uh, I'd like to keep the momentum going and, and try to schedule that for, uh, either December. Uh, I believe it's the second or the, uh, 16th. And, um, but, uh, we do, um, it'll depend on, um, on the progress that we make on, um, Canyon Park, uh, on the 18th and how much time we feel that that is gonna need on the second. So, um, uh, since we're still in study session mode, we don't have to continue this to a date certain. Uh, so we will, we'll be getting back to you, uh, on that though. But I, I, I definitely hope to bring it back on, um, either the, the second or the 16th of December. So thank you for, uh, the, uh, input. That was, I think, a really good discussion. And, um, and I am going to, since it appears to be the only way to do it, I'm going to try to unmute all and see if we can identify, um, the call in user number four. Here we go.
Sierra and I will depart for Sierra and I will depart for the evening. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Thanks Christina.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Okay, the, the unmuting all. Okay, let me. So I'm gonna just try one more time. Let me also check my email real quick. No, I don't have a message there. So we knew that this could happen and I am prepared to, and I do have a, a presentation from our consultants on the critical areas. But if, if you're ready to launch into that section, that study session B, I can do that.
Yes, why don't we, we go ahead if, yeah, if you can't get the consultants, let's just move forward.
Okay. And, and again, we, we did talk about if this did, if we weren't able to get the consultants on board tonight, that we could also bring this back on, on the 18th. So at least we have a first touch in November. And, and then again, continue that into December as well.
And I did see Commissioner Olson and Commissioner Alder's asked to be recognized. So Commissioner Olson first.
I was just gonna say, if this person has only called in and they haven't joined the web meeting, star six should unmute them. So if the person pushes that on their phone, just a thought. I hadn't heard that yet, I don't think.
Okay, thank you for that. You're clearly more tech savvy than I. So calling user number four, if you're not able to unmute, you could try star six on your phone. And I'm seeing continuing to be muted. So if you are there, out there anywhere, Amy in the ether, or join us in progress, just definitely feel free to jump in. Well, I'm gonna, again.
Commissioner Alder, did you have a question or comment to before we launch forward?
I was going to motion that we take a break before we move into the next study session. And I can, I'm perfectly happy being voted down, but just wanted to offer the opportunity since there's, we seem to be at a lull.
Well, do we wanna take a 10-minute break? Guess show of hands if you're interested. One, two. Do we wanna plunge forward and keep moving? I guess we have two for break and extensions. Why don't we take a brief break then? I see 7:13 on my computer. Let's be all back and on by 7:23. That work?
Okay.
Dave, you can check if you can find your consultants somewhere.
Yeah, I will try sending him an email.
All right, see you all in 10.
Thanks.
For what that's worth.
That's what I use for like seeing my friends now.
So let's resume tonight's meeting, the November 4th Planning Commission meeting. Moving on to our study session agenda item on the Critical Area Regulation Code Amendments.
Hey. I am going to to share a screen. Bear with me for a second here. Okay. Okay, can you see my screen? Okay. So this is a presentation that was put together by our consultants on this project. Amy Sumi of Shannon and Wilson is the lead consultant and she has support from Burke, Lisa Greeter and Kevin Gifford with Burke. At least Amy is the one who's doing the sort of technical review of our wetlands regulations. And Lisa and Kevin are providing backup support. Analyzing the impacts on our building capacity of different buffer width regulations. So just a little bit of background before I actually get into the objective here. Some of you will recall that we, in 2019, we, actually this was first initiated in 2018. And previously, we went through a planning commission process, study sessions and, and public hearing. And made some recommendations for relatively minor amendments to the critical areas regs that were, had to do with adopting new scoring systems for, for Habitat. And and in the process of doing those regulations and having them reviewed by the Department of Ecology, the, the Department of Ecology staff person that was reviewing said that he felt that we needed to either adopt the Ecology's model regulations for wetland, for buffer widths or update our best available science that we used back in, in 2004, 2005 to establish different buffer requirements than the, the model regs. So we took that to, the Planning Commission recommended making the changes in the Habitat scoring system. And, and then deferring the, the question of changing our buffer widths until we could get some funding to, to hire consultants to support that because we didn't feel like we had the staff expertise to do that. And council wasn't comfortable with that approach. And so they, they have, they did not adopt the original regulations. They didn't initially provide the funding that we needed. But eventually we were able to get funding to hire this consultant team and do this, this analysis. So the analysis is to really take a closer look at what would, what would be the consequences of adopting the model ordinance for wetland buffer widths. And, and then also to consider other updates to the wetland regulations to improve clarity, usability and flexibility. So the, the main focus so far and, and of the report has been on the wetland buffers. So we, as I said, the current regulations are based on best available science analysis that was done back in 2004, 2005. We did make some relatively major updates in 2010 and at that point, those were officially current. The, since then, Ecology's guidance has evolved and, and, and we are now trying to bring our regulations in sync with, with their, their guidance and best available science. I also wanted to note that we have separate wetland regulations and buffer regulations in our Shoreline Master Program. And it's codified in, in, in Offal Municipal Code, Chapter 13.13. And specifically Section 020. And that, and those were updated in 2019. So since that was done fairly recently and passed muster with Ecology at that point, we're not intending to change those. So the buffer widths comparison here. So the, the wetland category one is the, is the most, has the highest value and the categories go one through four. The, and so these tables show the standard buffer widths. And the biggest concern about adopting the, the Ecology's Model Code and buffers were those numbers in the bottom right circled in red. And those are for wetlands that have a very high habitat score. And in reality, those don't exist within urbanized areas like Bothell or they're, they're very rare. So the other thing that if, that these, just these numbers and the discrepancies between our buffers and, and the Ecology Model Code buffers, just looking at the numbers doesn't take into account, sorry, that if we adopt Ecology's minimization measures, and most developments now do adopt these, partly because we have adopted updated stormwater, the state, updated stormwater manual, and have basically incorporated many of these things as either code requirements or best practices. So if you apply these, and it would make, certainly make sense that we would, then the, applying those Ecology model buffers has much less of an effect. And so in this analysis, the consultants created a library of 31 rated wetlands with habitat scores from projects that have been done in the, mostly in the last five, five to six years since the last update in the code. And determined the buffer width for each wetland. And that's depicted here in this graphic. And shows in the red line, the Ecology buffer width with no, without the mitigation, minimization measures, and in the yellow line, with the minimization measures. And, and the green shaded area, well, the bright green shaded area is the wetland, the bluish green, teal shaded area is the current buffer. But you can see that they're very close to the Ecology buffer width minimization measures. Moving around this little graphic. So out of those 31 samples, oh, and I should say that the lowest valued wetlands, the category 4 wetlands in the Ecology model code, actually have smaller buffers than we do in our code. And so a number of the wetlands that we looked at resulted in smaller buffers than our current code. A few did expand, or did result in an increase of 10 feet. And then a few, several did got larger by 25 feet. And again, those are the highest value wetlands. So overall, the change in terms of buildable area is quite negligible, as you can see from these numbers. The, that doesn't mean that on an individual property, the impact might not be significant. But in terms of overall, and that was our main concern, is whether applying these model buffers would have a significant effect on our buildable area and our development capacity and require us to go back and reexamine that. But the analysis showed that the impact overall is relatively minimal. So in summary, it would, incorporating the Ecology buffers would increase the consistency of wetland regulations inside and outside of shoreline jurisdiction, so that we wouldn't. And that is a benefit to both applicants and to reviewers, that they have a more consistent set of buffers. And using Ecology's buffers with their minimum minimization measures would result in smaller buffer widths overall and increased development opportunity overall. Again, certain sites would have reduced capacity. And if we use the buffers without the minimization measures, it would result in a larger buffer width and reduced development. And here's where really use our consultant.
Dave, you want to pause for a minute? I just scrolled across and saw Commissioner Gustafson would like to comment.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for your good eye. Sarah Gustafson here. Dave, could you please define for us again, what is minimization measure? Just before we launch into the next set of slides.
Here, on this, this slide shows the minimization measures that would be required. So directing lights away from the wetland, locating noise generating activities away from wetlands, and if warranted, enhancing the existing buffer, reducing toxic runoff, taking measures to reduce toxic runoff. Again, these are these are things that our stormwater manual would already require. Toxic runoff and the stormwater runoff. Treatment of new runoff, which I do believe would also, would be required by our stormwater manual, compliance with that. Minimizing human and pet disturbances and controlling dust. Again, these are all things that, according to our consultants, either are already required by other means, or would be relatively simple to, for projects to comply with.
Yes, Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you. So my follow-up question is, how do these minimization measures end up causing more buildable percentage?
So in Ecology's model code, if you apply the minimization measures, the buffers are reduced.
Okay, thanks.
So to clarify, or I guess to confirm, they would be required to implement all of these measures, correct? Not just, it's not a menu of choices, it's a requirement of all?
Yes.
So these are essentially incentive, the incentive is a reduced buffer if you do all of these beneficial things?
Right, correct.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go back. So they've looked at different buffer width modifications. Currently, we have, we do the first bullet, we have a non-standard buffer width based on old science, best available science. Buffer reduction with enhancement is what we were just talking about, applying the minimization measures. And then and then there may be a need to change our provisions for buffer averaging to match the Ecology guidance. And then there are certain category 4, and again, the least the least valuable wetlands that qualify for a limited exemption, and which again reduces the impact of these these requirements. And require the applicant to show that the criteria are met. And so when we reviewed the off-site mitigation options, when we did the Shoreline Master Program update, the Shoreline Board instituted some some restrictions on off-site mitigation that basically make it very difficult, if not impossible, to use mitigation banks. And the, and in lieu fee programs. So King County and the state have established a mitigation bank in the Redmond area that is considered, and Bothell is considered to be within its service area. And we do get requests for to use that mitigation bank. And the current shoreline code wouldn't allow that. And even our current critical areas code makes it difficult to use that. Also, King County has established an in lieu fee program. And again, those, both the wetland banks and the in lieu fee programs require very vigorous vetting by Ecology. And and staff and also other jurisdictions, state have, are encouraging jurisdictions to allow the use of these. And our feeling is that while there may be a justification to limit their use within the shoreline jurisdiction, outside the shoreline jurisdiction, we are recommending that we make some changes that remove the impediments. It would still put as a first option to do mitigation onsite if it's if it's possible and actually provides benefit. But there are cases where the wetland banks and in lieu fee programs may make sense, and we don't want to preclude those. And I think that's the last slide. So I'm probably not going to be able to answer any of your questions, but I'm certainly willing to field them, answer them if I can, and then we can pass those on to our consultants and bring this item back on the 18th to have a more in-depth discussion.
Okay, so you want to bring back all of the commissioners so I can see? And I see Commissioner Olson would like to ask a question, and Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Dave. I'm sure it's not big fun to jump in for the consultant. I guess I'm just, I feel like I'm not connecting the dots on the mitigation part, especially off-site mitigation. Can you, are you able to walk me through sort of a scenario when it would make sense to allow off-site mitigation? Like, in my mind, where they're building, that's where we need to be focusing, but I feel like maybe I'm missing part of the story there.
I'm sure our consultants could provide better examples, but I know know of, I can think of a couple of projects in the downtown suburb area where off-site mitigations come up. And one other example that involves washout projects. So the washout project, right now, they're going, beginning permitting for improvements along 405. And in some cases, they are, they're there's just no way to design those improvements, those extra lanes, without impacting some wetlands. And and so they have expressed an interest in using the wetland banks as an option there. In downtown, there are two projects where we have what are known as shelf wetlands, so they're not, they're away from any other water bodies. They're on topographic shelves in the landscape. So they're isolated, they're low category, and also have low habitat scores. And they are right in the middle of these parcels, and would significantly reduce the development, or potentially even preclude development of the parcels. So we think that those are good candidates for off-site mitigation, and possibly the wetland wetland bank project near Redmond, and they otherwise fit all the criteria. So those are the kind, some examples, and again, I think our consultant could probably provide others.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Quick thank you to Commissioner Olson for the great question. I wanted to follow up on a different question first, which was about, I guess you would call it the proposed changes to the minimization standards that Ecology laid out. It seemed like Ecology had all those 10 things that applicants would need to do in order to reduce the buffer. And then we're changing that a little bit by adding three new elements, and one of them had to do with vegetation. And that passed me by really quickly, so I would like to return to that slide to see why are we modifying the Ecology model buffer standard, which seems pretty reasonable, as we've discussed, and gives developers a chance to have some flexibility. So why are we modifying those, and what would be the costs and benefits of each of those modifications?
I'm gonna try to go back to that slide, as you suggested. Let me go back, get back to the minimization chart. Okay, I assume it was something following this that you're referring to?
Yeah, so this is Ecology, what currently is in the model ordinance. And then I think three pages later was the things that we would diverge from Ecology on. Yeah, sorry, down. One more. Yeah, this, right here on page 9, buffer width modification. This is my understanding what city of Bothell would do to change the model ordinance, so I wanted to focus on that. So I can go on, what I think would be the costs and benefits myself. Non-standard width. Expand circumstances. That doesn't mean much to me. I don't understand what expand circumstances mean when an existing improvement limits the extent of the standard buffer. It sounds like if there's a road or some other necessary public function that's preventing the Ecology.
That's exactly right. So currently, where you have a wetland and there's a an improvement, like a road, that essentially limits the buffer, or that's within the buffer, we interpret that, the road, as actually being the effective limit of the buffer. And it's, a question has come up. Questions have been, have arisen over exactly what what kinds of improvements do limit those. And also, in some cases, these improvements were done prior to the current buffer. So they may have been compliant when they were built, and they're now non-conforming. And so the question has come up, so if somebody has developed a site, and to some extent, and maybe developed parking areas, but And so the question has come up, so if if somebody has developed a site and and to some extent, and maybe developed parking areas, but hasn't actually built the buildings associated with those that parking, can they then come back and keep those parking areas, even though they're now non-conforming? Or and or could they even actually build buildings on those areas that have this, you know, previously limited the extent of the the buffer? So you'll you'll see in the report language relating to that. And in fact, one situation that that they don't apply that to is, or at least it's been is a single-family driveway. So I think that's something we're we're considering. So right now, a roadway can limit the extent of a buffer, but just a single-family driveway would not. Is it okay to go on to the other two here?
I will just add to sense. I guess that makes sense to me. It is important to grandfather in existing, but I'm curious whether ecology would have some way to handle that as opposed to us just making it up on the fly for Bothell. So that's my thought on that first one.
Okay, well, we're not making it up on the fly. That's why we hired the consultants that are applying their what other jurisdictions have done and and what best available science supports. And ecology has at least done an initial review of the report and given it an initial thumbs up. They may not have gotten into it in 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 great depth, but I should have, I should have mentioned that upfront. And I'm I I'm expecting that they will provide some written comments as we move forward on this.
Okay, thanks. So now we can go on to number two. Thank you. I think I understand this one. I just don't understand if we have a really good system to evaluate how good these non-vegetative enhancements will be, and it seems like we're just making it more difficult in some ways. In some ways, it's just easier to put in plants, maybe, instead of having a whole system to evaluate whether the hardscaping would be equivalent to the planting, so.
And I'm gonna have our consultants address that one. I might get into trouble if I tried.
And then I don't understand the third.
So I think this is a situation where the consultant has has said that if we go with the ecology model buffers with the mitigation minimization measures, our current we should change our current language about averaging buffer averaging to match the ecology model.
That sounds good. Thank you. Thanks so much for going back to that slide in for everyone.
You bet.
Commissioner Alderks first, then Commissioner Vliet.
Thank you, Chair. Jenny Alderks here. My comment was actually going to be about that last slide we were just looking at. And I heard you mention that that one of the reasons for the changes to these recommendations or to is because there's new new best science. And that there had been previous. I'm not going to get the all the terms. I'll do my best. But there had been previous guidance given from ecology for these buffers based on the best science of the time. And so some of these changes are coming because we just have better, newer information, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay. And so that, like, I appreciate Commissioner Gustafson's questions to to clarify even further, but especially relating to that, the third one on that on that slide. My sense is that some of these changes we would be making in order to comply with best science, which is one of the directions that we've received as a commission. Is that a correct understanding, too?
Yes, and I also say that this approach of adopting the ecology model buffers and the other measures with perhaps some some modifications enables us to essentially use ecology's best available science analysis and not have to do extensive further work on our own.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I will give the floor to Commissioner Vliet.
Commissioner Vliet.
Yes, Commissioner Vliet here. Thanks for that, Dave. Nice job juggling this, not having the consultants here. You you had one part on the slide, and I can't remember what page it was on, I believe it was there, where you mentioned something about if something was less than 4,000 square feet, there's a potential possibility to do to fill it in?
Yes, and and again, that's a detail that that I would feel more comfortable deferring to when we have the consultants here to address that.
Because that one sounds that pretty iffy to me, but so it'll be good to have the, I'm looking down at Karsten there. I know he's like, you know, on this stuff through his work life, so. But yeah, I'd like to hear some more about about that. That seems like a pretty significant amount of square feet. So, but thanks, Dave.
The other commissioner comments or questions? Commissioner Kurd.
Thanks. This is Karsten. Thanks, Dave, for the presentation. I props to you. These questions aren't necessarily for you, but if the consultants play back the tapes and they can get more feedback, just some of them are echoing what's previously been said. But my main question is about the minimization measures. I'm specifically curious if there's a one-to-one sort of benefit for non-vegetative improvements, which is what Commissioner Gustafson said earlier. I really would like to delve a little bit more into the technical details on how you can quantify a reduction in a buffer based on pretty subjective measures that they may be more qualitative rather than quantitative. Yeah, so that's one of my issues. The other one is about mitigation banks. This subject has been reached several times in both shorelines and in council and also in commission. And I think we've given and heard pretty consistent feedback from both the community, experts in the community, and elected and appointed people on boards and commissions about kind of the mistrust of mitigation banks, especially because they are in other jurisdictions and it's kind of feels like it's an an export of our public funds and our resources to other communities which are experiencing benefit. And so I would ask that the consultant just provide a little bit more information about about that and kind of listen and and keep in mind that the preference so far and recently has been to keep things in Bothell, keep things as close to the site as possible first, rather than approaching even consider consideration of mitigation banks. Furthermore, I think that there are probably some opportunities to work with other jurisdictions, neighboring jurisdictions, or like St. Homish County Conservation District. We've seen in Canyon Park that there are opportunities for Bothell to use in lieu fees to maintain infrastructure or to put that towards stormwater treatment here in Bothell. And so I'm just wondering why we're kind of rehashing mitigation banks when I feel like that's there's been hard, hard and consistent feedback from the community so far on that use. So anyway, thanks for the presentation, and I hope that we can get more clarification from the consultants when they're available.
Thank you. Commissioner Vliet.
Yes, one last comment, and I think I already know the answer to this, but what was interesting is looking at the list of things that can be done to minimize the buffer that might be required. I always am concerned about enforcement in the future. And I guess jokingly, it'd be kind of hard for a wetland to go back to an enforcement official to say that things weren't being followed or whatever. So I guess trying to kind of just set something up that's not going to need a whole lot of enforcement oversight. Because I really don't think we have we don't have the staffing right now to go in, or maybe I'm wrong, but I to go and investigate, you know, if these things are kind of being followed. So that's something to just kind of keep in mind if we're talking about minimizing at all or or granting exceptions.
I will say that I think we we do have we we do have some enforcement capacity, and it's, it doesn't fall just on the community developments code compliance officer. We have stormwater staff that are out in the field very I mean, almost continuously doing monitoring and and so that these things do get reported and and enforced. I can't say that we we catch everything, but but there, we we work with other departments that are out in the field. I guess I would also cite Parks Department as kind of having eyes, eyes in the in the natural community that are help out with that.
Dave, is there signage around some of these buffer boundaries that people are aware of what they are?
Yeah, in fact, there's in in the code, there's a standardized wetland sign that that is required for developments that that have wetlands.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Alderks and then Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you, Chair. Jenny Alderks here. I believe I've seen one of those signs. The new Ravens Ridge, I guess it's not so new anymore, but Ravens Ridge is a newer development over on 88th as it turns into 7th. And I've seen some signage saying that this is, you know, protected wetland, and and I'm guessing that that's some of the buffer, like, that might be an example of a buffer that you're talking about, that houses were built around, but there is a protected wetland area by the road that is is designated to to, you know, address these concerns. And then, which leads me to a question about the greater area. Behind that development in particular, there is a large forest area, the forested area on West Hill, that from my understanding is not developed because of wetland issues. It's just very soggy out there and and steep and, you know, there's a ravine and and so it's not something that has been developed, but I wonder what kind of protection is planned for that area as development continues to encroach upon it? And does this wetland mitigation process have a role to play in that particular area?
I'm not familiar with that development. I mean, I've I've heard of it. I have a general idea of where it is, but I'd have to do a little research on that one, but your comment made me realize another aspect of enforcement is, in fact, the signage so that the general public knows where these areas are, and if they see something that they they think shouldn't be going on in a wetland, oftentimes our enforcement comes from from citizen inquiries like that. I'll I'll check into the the Ravens Ridge situation and the adjacent forested area. I suspect that it is there, there, I know that there are some large wetland areas in in that vicinity and and so that that will be protected by the the wetland regulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank all the commissioners for really great comments here. My curiosity is about, I guess, the characterization of the shoreline management program, new regulations, which creates almost like hierarchy of preferences surrounding possible mitigation. When I looked at the report from the consultants, it almost seemed like they were saying the shoreline regulations require onsite mitigation, and the only other option is to do offsite mitigation or mitigation banks. That was not my understanding of the shoreline regulations that the shorelines board put together. Instead, it was if you can't mitigate within the exact area, and if it's impossible, then you have the ability to move to the sub-basin and in concentric circles, depending on how difficult it is. And offset mitigation is an option. It's just the least preferred. So my question is, reading that these shoreline regulations have made it really hard to see the development that we want to see, whether it's current or future, what are some examples of that? Because as a member of the shorelines board, I was actually pushing for more flexibility, and if the compromise that we came to is actually not allowing the flexibility, and it's having that unintended consequence, I would like to know right away so that we can evaluate whether to use that. So long story short, I just want more clarity on what the shorelines regs are and how they have or have not encouraged or impeded development so far. Thank you.
I guess the point that I was trying to make, and I think that the the report makes is not, well, there are limitations on development within shoreline area. I guess the concern has been that, and and we're not proposing any changes to the shoreline regs, but we're recommending that planning commission consider in terms of offsite development something that provides more flexibility and makes it provide, puts up fewer barriers to the use of some of these other tools like land mitigation banks and in lieu fee programs that are established and and have been fully vetted as 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 being beneficial. And to get back, there was a comment about, so, you know, what's the benefit to Bothell of of allowing contribution to mitigation bank in Redmond? So these mitigation banks have service areas and so this particular one is is within the Semamish River, the larger Semamish River Basin. So there is there is a benefit to this, the river as a whole and as it flows through Bothell, so I guess the the argument we're trying to make is that it's that it's appropriate to have a different approach for wetlands within the shoreline jurisdiction and and wetlands outside of the shoreline jurisdiction.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Yeah, thank you, Dave Boyd, for clarifying that the shorelines regs will stay as is. This is not proposing any change to them. I feel my question is, obviously, I'm biased because I was on the shorelines board. I thought those regulations were pretty well-done as a compromise between really, I would say hardcore environmentalists and more business-minded people, myself included, on the shorelines board. And I understand that they might not be appropriate for the critical areas ordinance, but I feel that before we make that decision, I would just like to see some I feel that before we make that decision, I would just like to see some more thought on that as, and I feel like they're kind of being taken off the table just because they might have negative incentives for development, and I just would like to go through that a little more because I do believe the shorelines regulations reflect some of the concerns of the commission and of the appointed members that Commissioner Kurt brought up. So, thank you.
And I'll, I'll pass that on to our consultants.
Thank you so much. That's a lot to write down and pass forth. I really appreciate it.
Okay, other commissioner questions or comments? Seeing none, so Dave, next steps.
So I, I, I would suggest that um, that we uh, and I've con- I have confirmed this with the, with the consultants, that they are available on the eighteenth, so to have them come on the eighteenth and uh, and and between now and then, if they can uh, address any of these questions in their report or the presentation uh, to do that and then and just be available uh, to answer questions and have have more of a dialogue with the commission. So it would be a essentially a continued study session, similar to what we discussed uh, with the the housing code amendments. And and in this case, I would actually ask the commission, since we didn't put that on the calendar or in the imagined notice, uh, that the commission, it it's not technically required, but uh, if you formally um, extend the study session to uh, November eighteenth, um, uh, then it is on the record.
Okay, so would that uh, require a motion?
Ideally, yes.
Okay, so is there a motion to extend the study session to November eighteenth? So Commissioner Olson first, then Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you, Chair. I move to extend our study session to November eighteenth.
Commissioner Gustafson, did you have a comment? Is that a second? Okay, yes. You're muted, but I take
Commissioner Gustafson, yes, it's a second. Apologize.
Oh, no problem. Uh, any discussion on the motion to extend the study session to our next meeting on the eighteenth? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of extending? I see unanimous consent there, so uh, Dave, I think you got what you need on that one?
Yes, thank you.
All right, um, I think that concludes our study session. We now move on to uh, old business, and one item of old business we have before us is the uh, letter to council. We had a subcommittee or a committee formed at our last meeting and Commissioner Alderks, you chaired that uh, committee. Letter was sent out today. Did everyone have an opportunity to see the letter? Seeing nodding heads. So uh, Commissioner Alderks, you want to say a few words about the letter the committee drafted?
Yes, thank you. Um, Jenny Alderks here. The, the subcommittee gathered, I've got together um, for those, for those listening, that's my son, uh, barreling through the room. Um, so we gathered and the goal of our letter was to um, to appropriately reflect the motion that we, that we voted on at our last meeting. And so um, whatever feedback that we could receive specifically, that's, that's kind of our main question is, is does it adequately reflect the motion that that we made? Um, and also we wanted to uh, we wanted to communicate to council that we are aware of their stated priorities and goals um, relating to diversity, equity and inclusion, um, especially given recent, the recent resolution that they passed. So, those are kind of my thoughts on, on what we did and and, you know, welcome discussion.
Well, I'll start with a question, then I see Commissioner Gustafson as well. Uh, you make reference to the Dive-In Committee and I'm not familiar with their work. Could you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. Um, the Dive-In Committee, it stands for Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, and it is a group of um, of city staff members who are looking at um, DEI in the scope of of city, like of the city workplace, of of their workplace and and what's um, how it affects city staff. So it's, it's specifically for kind of the internal workings of city of Bothell and not necessarily a public engagement um, uh, opportunity or uh, but they do, you know, you might have seen um, around Pride Week that they put out, they made some really nice flyers about there's no room for hate in Bothell. Um, and so some of, some really great work has come out of that committee that um, has, that, that we, you know, that that the council and members of the community, and I myself included, want to build upon.
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson, did you have a comment or question?
Sarah Gustafson here. My question was about the logistics of presentation, but I actually think that might be premature. I also wanted to maybe uh, reach out to Commissioner Vleet, who brought up some interesting questions and who saw both sides of making this statement and see if there are any questions that he had that might be there to strengthen this letter.
And I thank you, Commissioner Gustafson. Um, what I, I, I've been thinking about this and I, for one, I want to uh, commend you all for or Commissioner Alderks or whomever was involved with the putting it together, I believe there were three of you, um, it's a very well-written letter. Uh, it is excellent. Um, I haven't been as, I think, involved as some of the people on the commission are with regards to um, kind of what's going on with regards to council and people in the community with regards to the city of Bothell, so I'm um, on, with respect to this specific topic. And obviously on a national level, uh, we know we're starting to make some good strides towards uh, towards equity that will happen over time. Um, and so I guess I'm kind of putting my faith into the people on the commission who have been spending more time at um, planning commission meetings, talking to citizens about this particular topic. And so um, I um, some of my concerns don't necessarily have to do with this particular topic. I would guess I'd be avoiding the actual discussion we're having tonight, but there's other things that that aren't included in this particular letter. It's not necessarily having to do with like um, diversity per se, but for instance, maybe older people in the Bothell community who've um, been here for decades, um, and have created a great community, and they're being priced out of the community. Um, that, 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 I guess, is a totally different topic, but I know there's a lot of people that are affected in many different ways um, in the Bothell community uh, be- because, uh, over time, so I don't know, let me just pull up the letter. I have it here. Um, and I don't, I mean, I, just for what it's worth, I think I'll probably be um, I'll be voting in favor of this letter. Um, I, I still have some very big concerns about what type of salary this is going to be. Um, I've even been thinking about the potential. I don't know if the, I don't believe the commission would be open to this, but I know, for instance, like when, you know, I was on the, through the Landmark Preservation Board, we do have a part-time uh, preservation consultant. I mean, that's pretty minimal. I think it's like twelve hours a week or something like that. Uh, or maybe it's twelve hours, I don't, a week, maybe that's about right. But uh, so I don't know if anybody opened to more of a part-time, but um, i- if, if you all aren't, then I'd probably still be voting in favor of this full-time position, but I, I have some strong concerns about the, the salary uh, and the affordability for the city. And I know a lot of these things are super important to people, so. Anyway, those are, that's a long-winded comment, but, so thanks for asking for my input. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Alderks.
Um, if I could respond, would that be okay? Okay. Um, I'm, I'm really glad, Commissioner Vleet, that you brought, I'm sorry, Jenny Alderks here. Um, I'm glad, Commissioner Vleet, that you brought up uh, the broader scope of inclusion, uh, which very much so is included in diversity, equity and inclusion. It's, it's, I think a lot of people think given the, the cultural moment and the, the national news, that it relates to um, to, to race. And while it does certainly apply to race, it very much has more to do with um, all forms of discrimination and inclusion, including the elderly, uh, children, disabilities, uh, people who are LGBTQ. Uh, so it's, it's very inclusive is the word, um, in the sense that it, it very much is looking at um, beyond just the scope of race, beyond the scope of, of economics, um, economic status as well to, to include all areas of, of underprivileged and marginalization that exists within a, within a community. Um, so I'm, I'm grateful that you have an eye towards that, and I want to, I want you to know that um, that's very much included in, in the mission and scope of, of a DEI position. Um, the other question you specifically asked was about uh, funding, and um, I'm grateful that it's not our responsibility as a commission to know where funding comes from. That very much is um, within the purview of the city council. Um, and so where they are receiving this letter and, and, you know, taking action on it in whatever way that is, um, I, I do hope that they are considering part-time options, uh, contract options, full-time, and they're looking at the, the variety of, of ways that we could work with a DEI consultant. Um, that is, you know, it's not a one-size-fits-all. It's, we're not even necessarily making a recommendation on, on the employment status of this staff member. Um, we are specifically saying that we would like a staff member employed. Um, beyond that, it's sort of up to them to figure out how to make that work. And then up to us, I guess, as pub members of the public to comment on that. So hopefully that's, that's helpful.
That is very helpful. That is very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of a mentor of mine a long time ago said that a budget is a policy document expressing the priorities of an organization. So I think that's some of what's being, some of the intent of this, so. Commissioner Olson, I think you had a hand up.
I did. I did. Thank you, Chair. Um, Amanda Olson here. I'm very bad at remembering to do that. Um, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Kurt and Commissioner Alderks for a meeting. We met um, for quite a while um, last week, and we also followed up later on, just to make sure we had the letter where we wanted it to be. There was a lot of co-authoring and making sure we were trying to use the right words, so I really appreciate the collaboration very much. So thank you.
I echo that. It was, um, it was very, it was a, a team and, and an effort that we all, we all did together. So I appreciate my, my co, not chairs, but you know, the, the member, other members on the committee. Yes, thank you.
Okay, any uh, Commissioner Kurt, I say the yellow.
Thank you. This is Karsten. I also thank everyone who worked on it and um, I just wanted to maybe follow up on the last point of discussion there is that um, when I was thinking about this, um, and the, the wording of the um, motion that was made on Planning Commission last time, um, I don't know if there was a, a better way to phrase it, but um, I really see a DEI staff member as being a, another tool in the tool belt of Planning Commission. Um, and so our work intersects so greatly, um, like you said, Commissioner Vleet, with um, you know, housing affordability in multiple aspects of, of um, demographics. And it's not just about targeting one issue or another, but it's on the wider scale. So I really appreciate the, the thought and care that went into the wording, wording and verbiage that we, um, that we chose. And I feel really comfortable with it. Um, I wanted to kind of segue into how we are going to present this. Um, that wasn't necessarily something that we had discussed on the subcommittee, and I want to hear what other people think about whether we should just submit this as a letter to council, or if we should follow it up with the presentation, not presentation, but presentation of the letter in public comment or or what, so.
So I'm going to ask Commissioner Vleet, uh, you were chair when the commission submitted a letter to council regarding planner position. What specifically did we do at that point?
You know, I believe that Dave Boyd, you, you have to jog my memory on this, but um, we did submit a letter uh, a couple of times uh, for a couple of different things. And basically, I knew staff asked me to be present at the um, at the, at the Planning Commission meeting, when, the next Planning Commission meeting, after we have uh, submitted the letter, and they generally had a few follow-up questions, and I think once I was the person responding to the questions and another time, I think there was, there was another person. But um, but anyways, and it doesn't have to be that way, but I think that's probably what staff's going to recommend this time, but maybe Dave could say. But I think it's helpful to have, to present it, to be there in person right after we send the letter because I'm, and maybe even uh, I don't know if that's, Dave can give guidance on this, but to uh, present it during that comment. Thank you.
Uh, this is Dave Boyd, just to follow up on that. Uh, um, the um, the most recent letter that was sent, uh, uh, it was Commissioner Paistrick who presented it at the subsequent council meeting. Uh, and at least that's what uh, Director Cotterman uh, told me. Uh, I don't believe I was there at the time. And um, and I think he said that he actually read the letter uh, as part of the uh, I think as part of the public comment section of the, the meeting. So it's really up to the commission though, whether you want to just send the letter uh, uh, or send the letter and, and have a representative um, presented more formally at the council.
Okay, Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm, I'm really personally in favor of having um, somebody that we, you know, all agree on going and reading the letter. Um, I think the council packets are huge. Um, I think it's, it's easy for someone to read it and have some thoughts and then read the other, you know, million pages and maybe forget their thoughts. So I think that makes the most sense personally.
Okay, so let's, I propose we have two steps here. Look, Commissioner Gustafson, go right ahead. Oh, muted.
Um, Chair Kieran, and I might be getting ahead of myself here. I was going to talk about um, who I thought should read the letter, or some suggestions on that. And also to thank the great team who put this together. But I'll let you speak because I think you might be getting to that thing.
Yes, I was going to propose two steps for us. One is the letter itself to uh, I guess get a motion accepting the letter or amending it as, as proposed here. And then second, to discuss how we would transmit the letter to council. So if there's general agreement with that, I'd ask for a motion to, on the letter itself. Commissioner Olson.
I move that the commission approve the letter as is for submission to council.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Gustafson.
Sarah Gustafson, I second the motion. Thanks.
Okay, discussion around the motion. And I have a, I don't know if it's an artifact of my process, or the, the, the end of the first paragraph, four words or stretched out a whole line, is that a formatting issue, or is, okay, I don't want to pick nits, but so we can, we can clean that up. Okay, any other discussion? Preferably content-focused. Seeing no discussion, then all in favor of approval of the letter as proposed with whatever minor formatting there might be addressed? One favor? Okay, I see unanimous intent on that. So we will transmit this letter to council. Now the next question is the, the method for doing that. And I heard considerable interest in having a commission member be present in council, or virtually present, I guess, these days, and reading that letter, and then taking whatever questions or comments. Is that the general sense of the Commissioner Aldrichs?
Jenny Aldrichs here. Yes, that is my general sense that we would, maybe, maybe it is two steps. It's we decide how to present it, and then we decide who, like, and then assign who does that. I'm more, I'm more interested in discussing the who at this moment, but you lead the way, please.
Okay. Well, we can do it any number of ways. I could do it as chair of the commission. Commissioner Aldrichs could do it as the chair of the committee putting together the letter, or an interested commissioner could do it. Commissioner Aldrichs, then Commissioner Olson.
I would, I would request that Commissioner Gustafson consider presenting it to the council, since it was originally her motion. I realize that that relates to work schedules and things. So I would, I would understand if, if that's not a good fit for your availability, but we, we definitely missed having your, your contributions and wanted to, wanted to represent the motion well, since it, since the motion originally came from, from you. Commissioner Gustafson, sorry.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Well, I, Sarah Gustafson here. Commissioner Aldrichs, I'm very grateful to you, especially because you did, you three did the hard work of putting it together. And I actually would suggest that perhaps Commissioner, Chair Kirin, and if he feels comfortable, would be the one to present this as the chair, as someone who supported this motion. And to be very honest, I feel the city council has heard from some of us already on this, and I believe that this motion and the letter would carry most impact if it's first by the chair, if he feels comfortable, or the vice chair, if the chair would decline, because they're the chair for one. So.
I'm certainly willing and comfortable. I have considerable experience speaking to various city councils, so I don't have any concern there. Dave, question? Dave? Mute. Just a question on timing. Where's the council in the budget process? Do you know?
I don't.
Okay, because I, I think we want to, we certainly want to get this in before budget decisions are made, so.
Yeah, I, I could try pulling it up quickly, but, yeah, I, I guess I would encourage, so the next council meeting is on the 10th. I've already spoken with Chair Kirin about being there to represent Planning Commission, the Planning Commission recommendation on downtown outdoor space. And I, I don't, well, if, if it's presented under public comment, it doesn't need to go on the agenda, and you certainly have time to transmit it to council via email. So that would be one option.
Okay. And, and I am available at that meeting, so I can, I'm, I'm comfortable and able to, to make that presentation. Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chair. I am the kind of nerd that watches a lot of the council meetings. And they had one meeting about a proposed budget just recently, but certainly nothing is set in stone yet. Especially, there was a, a fair amount of discussion about priorities, I guess is the best way to put it. So I think, in my mind, having watched the, the last few, I think it makes sense at the next one to give the, to read the letter. And we actually practiced reading it, so it would come in under three minutes. So you're competing with Carsten to make sure you can read it within three minutes. But I, I wanted to thank you for reading it, because I think it's really great to have our chair read it. I was originally going to pick on Sarah, just like Jenny did, but I like the idea of the chair reading it, too. So thanks.
Okay, well, certainly, I am willing and able, so I will, I will read the letter. I'll talk to Director Cotterman about, I guess I would just email it to them. So I've got a copy of it. I'll take it. I'll email it to the entire council, and then be present for the public comment period to read the letter that had been previously transmitted to them. Any other? Commissioner Aldrichs.
Thank you, Chair. I believe that you could submit it under public comment, so that they know that you'll be, I think that's how you sign up to give public comment.
Yes.
So you could send it, you know, individually to the council email addresses, but I don't think that that puts you, like, on the docket for giving public comment if you, if you do it that way.
Well, I'd copy the clerk. I believe that would get me there, correct?
I'm not sure, but you might have more experience with that than I do.
I believe that your, that Commissioner Aldrichs is correct, to Dave Boyd, that at this point, I don't think it's, if you send it, it's not going to get on the agenda. You can, you can submit it under public comment.
Yeah, I thought that's where we were heading, that it would be introduced as a public comment, submitted electronically to all the council members and the clerk of the council, and then during the public comment time, I would read the letter referencing the fact that they have received it separately. And I'll, I'll verify that with the, with either Director Cotterman or the clerk, to make sure that I'm getting on and they're getting a copy. Okay? Any other discussion on this matter? We're good? All right. Any other old business for us to discuss? Seeing none, reports from staff? Dave, you got anything else for us?
The only thing I was going to report on was the outdoor space recommendation going to council on the 10th. So, and Chair Kirin has agreed to, to be there in case there are questions for the mission.
And, and when does that packet come out? The council packet?
Packets generally get finalized and go out Thursday afternoon. Sometimes they, they don't go out until Friday.
Okay, I'll take a look at it and make sure to review that item in the packet and
And, and actually, I will follow up with you to, I, I wanted to bring your attention some, some things that, that have been added as a result of legal review.
Okay. So I'm generally available, but you can email me and we can talk.
Okay.
All right. Reports from members? Any reports? There was a online event recently. Do we have a report? Commissioner Currie.
Thank you. This is Carsten. I didn't go because I had work late evening, but I understand that it was a really good presentation. Our, not consultant, but from Arch, someone who always visits from Arch. I forget his name now. Mike Stanger. Apparently made a showing there, and he had a presentation that if Commissioner Olson, I know she may have been there, she said, so I defer to her.
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. I did attend. I think I saw Dave there, too. Yeah, it was really, really good to, to hear different presentations. So Mike Stanger was there, and he gave a presentation on Arch, and then, and had a lot of good answers for questions. And then there was also, I don't know if everybody knows, Kristen Joyner, a deacon at Waltham United Methodist, and they are building housing downtown. They sold some of their land up on West Hill and bought a lot downtown, and it's a really cool project. So it was really great to get an overview of that and see kind of how they're adding affordable housing to the community. One of the things that stuck with me a lot that I've been really mulling over in my head was, it was, it was for multiple cities. So there was a resident of Kenmore who brought up that, you know, we do, in code, we have a lot of supports for units at 70 or 80% of area median income, but there are a lot of people who want their kids in North Shore schools, who want, who have jobs, you know, in the community, who can afford much less than that. And kind of saying that we need more solutions for that now. So it was interesting to hear the discussion about things that are happening in King County specifically. It was King County only, but about buying apartment complexes or old motels or things. And it's mostly, it seems like public agencies doing that. So I, I don't know if there's solutions that we have on the Planning Commission, but it was just, it was fascinating. So I'll stop talking now. That's, but it was a good event.
Commissioner Fleet.
I guess I don't, actually, I have a question to that. I know Kristen Joyner and Kate, and so where, where is that, where's that parcel that they're going to develop or purchase? Where's that? Just anyway, somewhere in the downtown area?
Yeah. This is Dave Boyd. My understanding was that they intend to purchase or somehow participate in a, a development in downtown.
Okay.
But they are now currently focused on the sale of, of their surplus property up on West Hill. And once that's done, they're going to focus on the downtown project.
Thank you. Good for them. That's a great organization. Awesome.
That sounds right. I think I just got excited and put it further ahead than it was.
Commissioner Aldrichs.
I also attended the affordable housing presentation, and I remember Reverend Joyner saying that they were supposed to close the day after the, the presentation was happening. And so I hope that that means that the closing on the property on West Hill went through, so that we can, you know, they can take the next steps, and, and we can get another update of, of what, what's next for them. I, I also would say that I attended the, the wetland mitigation presentation today, and appreciated the, the conversation about best science, you know, newest and best science. And, and was, it was helpful to understand the presentation tonight. So I would, I would throw that out there. That, that was something that I believe Anne Agard had recommended to us, and I was able to listen in on that.
Any other reports from members? Hearing none, and with no further business, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Commissioner Olson, then Commissioner Fleet.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? And we are adjourned, and a meeting we did not have to extend. So thank you all.